They are nice mugs. I've got two in my office.
Yeah, I have one at home. I like the size of them. They're kind of small.
Small?
Kind of. Like, I have some huge coffee cups and some small ones. I like the size of these ones.
I was gonna say, I kinda like, I like the size. It's, uh... One cup's enough for me.
Eh. For me, it depends on the day. I had two big cups of coffee today.
Coffee, but anymore, it's like...
Too much?
One cup with breakfast. A lot of times I don't...
Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe I'm just getting...
Or maybe you just don't need as much caffeine anymore.
It's all those vitamins I take.
That probably does help.
Yeah, I'd hate to think how I would feel if I didn't do all this.
I've been slacking on my vitamins lately, lately, and I can tell.
When I miss, the next day, I'm just kind of like, "Ugh."
Yeah, not the same.
My wife's really bad. If she misses, I mean, she's out of the county.
Do you just take like a multivitamin or...
Yeah, it has all ninety vitamins, minerals, and essentials that he added to it. It gives you everything in one pot.
That's cool.
And it's all natural. And it's, uh... It's the only one listed in the pharmacy, the doctor's pharmacy, so it is what you get.
Very cool.
My wife's got three degenerative discs in her back. Without the vitamins, she's just...
It's overwhelming. Yeah.
I wish there was something like that. She's helped me a couple of days to go do inspections, and it just wipes her out.
Yeah.
I mean, and it isn't like they're real physical. It's just being out for six hours and doing... She gets all else.
Yeah.
Excited about getting married?
I am.
Thinking it official?
I am. Should be fun.
It will be. I got married in my li... We moved into our house on March 3rd. We got married in the living room on March 4th. Mindy made the cake for the wedding. Uh, my dad did. He did the ceremony.
Wow, that's cool.
Uh, and that afternoon after that, Mindy had me out in the yard pulling up these shrubs.
It's all in a day's work, right?
All right. Wedding's over. Get to work.
Yeah. Honeymoon's over. That's pretty funny.
It's been good. It's been good.
How long have you guys been married? Wow. Awesome.
And then I've known her since she was sixteen.
Wow. That's really cool.
No, no. We worked at, uh, La Belle's as Christmas help.
Oh, that's adorable.
And, uh, when I quit, I asked her out for a date because I have this strict policy.
Yeah. Good idea.
And we dated for a part. She got married to some other guy. Got her divorce. Her mom. Says, "You know, I really miss you." And it took me two months of thinking to, "I really want to go back to the girl person."
Mm-hmm.
You're good. Never go back.
Right. Well, it sounds like it worked out.
So we'll do the exact same.
Oh, my gosh, I found it. This is a thank you gift for somebody who helped out. Friend of mine.
Wow, that was nice. Whoa, that was nice.
Um, yeah. And then I'll just sign the certificate.
I'm gonna look in your bag.
I think that's your name on it.
That's okay.
The most beautiful card.
Great.
Uh, thanking me for my... That's so sweet. If I could find that card, I would love to plonk. So many people that...
If I could get folks to take their seats, we're gonna get started in about one minute here.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
When, after you get done, make sure that you tell everybody that if they just got appointed to a board, that they're really obligated to stay for the entire meeting. That if they really care about this city and want to be involved, I should...
I'll let you make that announcement. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Regularly Meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together to meet this evening to discuss the business of the city. Lord, I ask that you would give us your wisdom and your direction as we make decisions tonight. I thank you for those who are here, for the staff members, and, uh, for volunteers, um, that help this city. Lord, uh, we just thank you for all your doing. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Members Olson?
Welcome, everyone.
Garantine?
Here.
Gillett? Martinez?
Present.
Russell?
Present.
Yates?
Present.
Mayor Jefferson?
Here.
Six present and one absent, the one absent being Councilmember Gillett.
Thank you. And for the record, Mayor Pro Tem Gillett, uh, did send his regrets. He is unable to be with us tonight. Um, move us on to Agenda Item Five. This is consideration of minutes of our previous session. Entertain a motion on 5A.
Move to approve the minutes on 5A. Actually, I cannot. I wasn't there.
Ah.
I was gonna abstain, but I'm trying to help you. I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, got a motion and a second. Any amendments or comments? Councilmember Olson, I know you will be abstaining. Thank you for that comment. Without seeing any further, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show 5As and one abstention, the one abstention being Councilmember Olson.
Move us on to Agenda Item Six. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. We have several speakers tonight. Our first speaker is Recreation Services Manager Joe Sack, here to recognize a citizen and staff for the quick response to a medical emergency. So great to have you here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am Joe Sack, the Recreation Service Manager. And as you know, the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Library is accustomed to providing excellent customer service. But tonight, I'm here to recognize staff and a resident who went beyond the call of their service. When an emergency situation was identified, swift and immediate response procedures were employed, and their actions resulted in a life-saving outcome. I'm honored to recognize the following people that responded to a medical emergency of an unconscious guest on Saturday, on Sunday, May 21st, 2017, at the Inglewood Recreation Center. So please join me as I call your name. Um, Inglewood resident participating at ERC who notified staff, Leslie Anderson. Inglewood Recreation Aquatic Staff who followed their training and provided emergency care until EMTs arrived. Sarah Meis. Regina Evans. A.J. Rivera. Also, the Inglewood Recreation Guest Services Staff who managed the emergency while still maintaining safety and operations of the Rec Center while the Savannah occurred. Susan Schnell. And Gina Zuzalak. I would also like to take this opportunity to also recognize their supervisors. Brad Anderson, Aquatic Supervisor. Kathy Wallace, Aquatics Program Administrator. And Shelley Frispele, Customer Service Supervisor. Mayor, I believe you have certificates to, uh...
Yes, I'd like to invite the council to come down with me and shake some of these folks' hands as we distribute these certificates.
And get a picture, I hope.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, folks. I'd ask you to stick around just for a moment. Maybe we have some council comments for this, but I'd like to hold those until, um, uh, council response to public comment and move on to our next speaker, uh, which is 6B Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident to address council regarding conduct. Um, Mrs. Bailey?
Kathleen Bailey, 4686 South Jason Street. Last City Council, I pointed out that Intergal's historically high rate in... Intergal reported that Inglewood's historically high rate in nucleic concentration sludge emits historically low milligram per year radiation dose risk exposure. Tonight, I will tell you how they did that. Instead of entering the real-time ACC Pickers Program sludge analysis data directly into the RESRAD program as a standard practice, Intergal instead ran selected ACC Pickers Program data through a program called Pro UCL. Pro UCL program tosses out all values above a predetermined range and then calculates an adjusted average with the remaining data. Intergal then entered these average values produced by Pro UCL into the RESRAD program. So the milligram per year radiation dose exposure reported by Intergal was based not... was based on these Pro UCL adjusted or averaged values, not the actual real-time Pickers Program ACC sludge analysis data sets. The whole purpose of a RESRAD use in water treatment industry is specifically to identify the actual radiation dose a worker or nearby resident received in a year in order to assess the actual, real-time milligram per year health risk. I will address this in more detail, including what Intergal did in their creative calculations concerning the additional radiation dose exposure emitting from the three years of stockpiled sludge, 2011, 12, and 13 during next City Council. Tonight, I want to use the rest of my time to call out Councilmen Gillett and Yates for their appalling dismissive comments I witnessed and make to our fire marshal at the July 3rd study session. Our fire marshal has significant critical responsibilities, not only enforcing, but reviewing and amending our fire codes every three years to ensure public safety. It was amply evident at the July 3rd study session that our fire marshal had completed a professional two-year evaluation of needed upgrades to our 2015 fire codes. The fire marshal had met with relevant Inglewood staff, including building, the building department and the community development department. And because Inglewood contracted with Denver to provide our fire services, our fire marshal also met with Denver's staff and worked closely with Denver Fire. Yet both Gillett and Yates flatly opposed her amendments, and their reasons were twofold. Foremost was they were disturbed by her joint efforts with Denver, exclaiming... You didn't... They did not want Inglewood to, quote, "lose its unique identity and autonomy from Denver." And then they exclaimed to our fire marshal, "That was the only reason we kept your position in the first place." Your opposition to Denver was woven into your only other objection, that you didn't want Inglewood to be overregulated like Denver, which would deter developers and businesses from working in Inglewood. When our fire marshal responded to your concerns regarding an operational permit requirement, she fully explained that it was additional administrative work she and her team were taking on in requiring only new businesses, including new businesses moving into an existing business location, to identify all hazardous materials they will have at their locations in order that police and fire will all have immediate access to real-time hazardous materials information when responding to emergencies. Your response, Councilman Yates, was the equivalent of telling her, "Isn't that your job?" You asked her, quote, "Don't you go around and expect these properties? Aren't you keeping track of what special circumstances you find at these properties?" Then you suggested that our fire marshal wanted this just because Denver does this. Councilman Gillett, you had the audacity to outright dismiss her entire two years of work updating Inglewood's fire codes by saying to our fire marshal, quote, "It looks like it was just easy to do what Denver is doing rather than develop our own," which you followed later with your standard denial format, but expressing something to the effect of, "Don't get me wrong. I'm not intending to say you didn't do the work and just took the easy way out and copied Denver's. It just looked like you did." Outrageous. Councilman Gillett, at the very end of the meeting, after all your dismissive criticism of our fire marshal and her work failed to bring any other council member to you or Yates' side, you simply jumped ship and declared you will support A along with a simple town hall meeting. Last, not only was your treatment of our fire marshal disturbing, but the fact that you both placed citizen safety and police and fire safety second to your concerns for developers and businessmen's wallets for the cost of a permit or the time needed to fill out an inventory of hazardous materials they will have at their locations is alarming.
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, uh, Koween Dickerson, an Inglewood resident addressing council regarding communication. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
Couldn't get up to the podium fast enough. Good evening. My name is Koween Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street. You have been considering lowering the speed limit on Broadway to 25 miles per hour to accommodate the old downtown renovations and goals. Since the entire city has a speed limit of 30 miles per hour, even in residential zones, except as otherwise posted for school zones and small areas of 25 miles per hour, I would ask you to reduce the residential streets that are not snow removal streets to 25 miles per hour, as it appears that speed limits are merely advisory to most drivers. There is a major sentiment expressed on Nextdoor to lower the speed limits and to install speed bumps and traffic slowing features, and to get more attention on the matter from police due to the ever-increasing traffic and reckless in speeding and collisions along most residential streets. The Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee has weighed in on this and said it would be a good topic for that committee. A corality issue is bikes versus cars and road use. While the comp plan has an element discouraging autos and encouraging wheeling, there is little practical ability to do so without reducing current housing stock in order to widen streets to allow for bike lanes or eliminating autos, which the comp plan seems to want to do. This involves people, uh, pushing strollers in the street as well, and pedestrians, because the sidewalks are not conducive to walking, pushing strollers due to the condition of them, and the regrettable tendency of property owners to not cut back over growth of shrubs that hinder the use of sidewalks. The debate between muscle-powered bike riders and drivers of cars and trucks is heated. And the similar debate about speed limits and traffic slowing features bring about a lot of issues about regulations, bike lanes, conditions, code enforcement, or lack thereof. These are bumpy issues, and that comment was intended. And one common denominator is speed and lack of attention by the drivers of cars and by riders of bicycles. One place to start is education of children in bike riding, rules of the road, and attention. You might consider a sort of voluntary licensing of bike riders to ensure that they understand the rules and are safe. I did see a class of 10- to 12-year-olds, about 15 of them, being taught on bikes the rules, turn signals, awareness of signs, and traffic the other day. Perhaps an official expansion of this kind of training would be in order, or some school resource officers escorting children on foot or teaching them. You should consider an act on reducing the speed limit on residential roads. Children ride bikes to schools, and the school zones are not sufficient to protect them en route. Uh, perhaps the police should be focused a little more on stopping and ticketing the high speeds and loud pipes along all of our roads and the known dangerous intersections. We have too many of the wrong regulations that are not or cannot be enforced. For instance, pot-bellied pigs, the number of unrelated people renting a residence, leash law for cats. I've never seen a cat. Well, I've seen one cat, but he was trained from six weeks old. Not to mention state laws that are not enforced by choice, and few if any to promote safety and community welfare, like making sure the sidewalks are conducive to walking and strolling, and the roads are not misused by scofflaws driving distracted, drunk, drugged, speeding, or being reckless. I have even seen city employees in their white pickup trucks speeding and talking on their cellphones at the time on my street alone. Maybe education of them would be another place to start.
Thank you, Mrs. Dickerson. Let me see if we have any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and for your comments. Um, I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item Seven. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have just one speaker this evening. That is, uh, Mr. Doug Coen, here to speak about what else but history. Welcome, Mr. Coen.
Good evening. Doug Coen, 3051 South Marion Street. Several of you got over to the General Ironworks Village grand opening celebration last week. Got me to thinking about another piece of history I just learned about that amazing factory, General Ironworks. A little while back, I told you most of the story that I knew. In, uh, the early 1950s, General Mills came to General Iron and said, "We have this vision for a new product. We have mountains of potatoes, and we're thinking if we cut them really thin and cook them and put them in bags, people will buy them." And General Ironworks invented the factory for making potato chips. The piece I didn't know about... Only heard about it about a month ago. A little bit later, General Mills came back to them and said, "We have this vision for a new cereal. We want to make it out of oats, and we want to make little circles, and we want to call them Cheerios. But we have no idea how to make Cheerios. Can you guys invent the process and the factory for making Cheerios?" General Ironworks, 1952. And I think that's kind of cool. Then one other thing. I haven't checked the schedule yet to see whether you guys are having a study session on the 31st. I would like to invite the audience and y'all to, uh, the history of Tiny Town. It's really gonna be fun. There's, uh, 2:30 in the afternoon and 6:30 in the evening over at the pub, 2:30 here at the library. The fellow who's gonna speak has been a locomotive engineer up there for 12 years. And you've noticed those cool railroad track suspenders anywhere. He invented them. Anyway, uh, July the 31st. I put posters on the boards outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coen. Let me see if we have any questions from council for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you, Mr. Coen, for your comments this evening. I'd like to move us on to council response to public comment. Would any council member like to kick us off this evening? Councilmember Maritain?
The, um, I'd like to thank the Rec Center, the staff. Um, they're not able to do that without all the training, without all the, um, emphasis on that emergencies happen and you have to be prepared for them when they do. And this is not the first time that I have sat up here and you guys have been responsible for saving somebody's life, and I'm sure that it happens a lot more often than, uh, we might even know. So I greatly appreciate your dedication, your training, and that you understand that when those things happen, um, you need to be ready to respond. And I think it's under the culture of that, the way that our employees behave, that we have citizens then who can go ahead and step up to the plate and become a part of that process and help. And I greatly appreciate that that culture exists there so that we have people that step up and make a difference. Might be me one day, or it was my son one time, the opening day of Pirate's Cove. I was... I thought he was the first rescue. Apparently, he was the second. So, um, I know that those things happen, and I greatly appreciate, um, the culture and the training and that you guys step forward to do that. Kathleen Bailey, I, I... It's always important that we see the process that we do through the eyes of the citizens we serve. Um, and I, uh, will take to heart some of the concerns that you had on, on how we've handled this process. Koween, um, I think that, uh, it's not the first time that we've discussed potentially doing 25 miles an hour in the, uh, community, and we'll see whether one of the boards or commissions will take that up. And, uh, Doug, thank you for again reminding us that the world would be a different place if it wasn't for Inglewood existing, that the entrepreneurialship, the creativity, um, the inventiveness that this community has shown for, um, since its existence, and you keep reminding us, um, in big and small ways, just how different the world would be without, without Inglewood existing. And I greatly appreciate it. You make me proud to be here and a citizen of this community every time you come and give us history. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have some comments I'd like to share. Mr. Sack, uh, thank you for bringing the recent medical emergency over at the Rec Center to our attention. Uh, you know, we deal with lots of, uh, issues here, uh, on Monday nights, but rarely are they life and death. And I really am proud to live in a community where neighbors help neighbors and city staff really goes above and beyond to help a community member in need. So thank you all, um, uh, for your quick action in, uh, saving a neighbor, and, uh, I genuinely appreciate that. Kathleen Bailey, thank you for being here and speaking. Uh, you know, here, we deal with lots of difficult issues, uh, as a body, and we have diversity of opinions. And, uh, you know, I do value that. You know, I'm sorry that the Mayor Pro Tem is not here to sort of discuss your comments, but, you know, I don't think that he had any mal-intent in, in, in what you were describing there. And I think this is, you know, maybe a friendly reminder that we really are on the same team. Uh, we really do, um, represent the same community and, uh, you know, even with some difficult conversations, we need to move forward in the best interest of the community. Uh, Koween Dickerson, thank you so much for being here. Uh, you know, I appreciate, uh, the idea of, um, you know, reducing the speed limit and some of these other thoughts that you had regarding code. I hope that some of those might be advanced, um, through the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee to come forward with some recommendations on those issues, uh, to see if you guys can get some consensus on that. Um, you know, I know that we've talked about the Broadway speed limit. Does anybody know if transportation is actively looking into that or where some of those might be? Councilmember Yates, do you have any?
Um, it's one of those items we've talked about on Broadway, but not as a city type of applications. It's been briefly mentioned, uh, a couple of times over the past four years. But, uh, there seems to be some, you know, it just hasn't been talked about seriously.
Yeah, fair enough. I, you know, I'd certainly be supportive of looking at, uh, some reduction, not only on Broadway, but also in some of the neighborhoods. Um, you know, I don't know. I know you guys are a little bit busy with some of your items, but perhaps, uh, when the agenda clears up at, uh, Transportation Advisory Committee, that this is something, uh, they could take on and bring, um, a recommendation to council working with our own transportation staff. Mr. Coen, thank you again, uh, for being here and, uh, making sure the history of Inglewood, uh, lives on. I love hearing about our, um, unique relationship to, uh, lots of historical things that are common that everybody knows, like your potato chip and your Cheerios. Uh, so thank you again for, for being here tonight and, uh, making sure again that history's... our, our unique and wonderful history, uh, stays alive here at Inglewood. Any other comments from any council members? Seeing none, I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item Eight. This is communications, proclamations, and appointments. Uh, tonight, we do have board and commission recognition.
Mayor, um, I would like to make a nomination before we move forward on...
Yes.
On that piece.
Please.
I would, uh, like to nominate Jerry Walker, uh, to be moved from alternate to regular member on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any comments on this motion? I will just, uh, for the record, note that I think, believe this was a bit of an oversight, um, when we were doing our rounds of, um, appointments. And so we wanted to make sure and clean this up because, uh, this is code enforcement, and they are a little bit shorthanded. And, uh, the, um... Alternate is not allowed to vote in that situation, so we wanted to take care of that tonight. Any other comments on this motion? Any other comments on this motion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record show six ayes.
Thank you. Now I'd like to move us on to ATA, the Board and Commission Recognition. I believe we're going to invite council in front of the dais here and form a receiving line for our new volunteers.
So new members for the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood, Jeremy Lambert, Nathan Hoag, Richard Langdon, and Amy Gallegos. From the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, for Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Erin Rieger. For the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, Gloria Tate and Coen Dickerson. Cultural Arts Commission, Rebecca Laurie Betancourt, Jay Rathburn, Lynette Moore, Kaylee Carpenter, David Carroll, and Kristin Skelton. For the Historical Preservation Commission, we have Hannah Braun, CJ Colanann, Matthew For Keep Inglewood Beautiful, we have Camille Kipers, Brianna Johnson, and Keely Sugden. For the Liquor and Medical Marijuana Licensing Committee, we have Alexander Wenzel. Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Mariah Haft and Maria Elsa Pi. For the Public Library Board, we have Dylan Carpenter. And the Water and Sewer Board, Caitlin Mercier and Andrew Mullen.
We had extra mugs, apparently. Congratulations to all of our new volunteers and thank you so much for your dedication and service to the City of Inglewood. Let's move on to--
If you're really dedicated and you just got on the board, you'll stay for the whole meeting.
We will not take it personally if you exit stage left, I promise. Move on to Agenda Item 9. This is the Consent Agenda Items. I would entertain a motion on Agenda Item 9 at this point.
I move that we--
It's 9B1 through 6 and 9C1 through 3.
Oh, I need this on top of my--
I'll take a so moved at this point.
All right, so moved.
Thank you. And a second from Councilmember Martinez. We've got a motion and a second. We have comments. Councilmember Barantine.
Okay, I'd like to pull 9B3, please.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell.
I would like to pull 9B1, 9C1, 2, and 3.
9B1, 9C1, 2, and 3?
Yes.
Thank you. That leaves us with 9B1, 4, 5, and 6. Any further comments on those consent agenda items that remain on the consent agenda?
Actually, not 1.
I apologize.
We pulled 9B1.
That leaves us with 9B1--
No, 9B2.
I'm sorry. 9B2, 4, 5, and 6.
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining consents agenda.
All votes have been cast. Record show six ayes.
Okay, I'd like to move us on to 9B1. This is Council Bill 26. This is amendments to the Municipal Code, Seat of Inglewood, Title 12, Chapter 2. Staff recommends council approve an ordinance to amend Title 12, Chapter 2, Sections 1 through 5 of the Inglewood Municipal Code 2000 entitled Waste Water Utility. Our staff sources Inglewood Littleton Waste Water Treatment Plant Environmental Compliance Manager, Dan Delauter. Delauter, is he here tonight? Perhaps, come on up. Thank you. Since this is a consent agenda item, council, I will skip a staff presentation and invite questions for staff at this time.
I just, oh, do I have to push my button?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Russell.
I just have a question. I voted for this last time and I intend to do it again, but I was wondering why it took so long. It came for first reading in April, on April 3rd, and it just now is coming back for second reading.
Okay, I can, my name's Tim Grolspuck. I work at the Little Inglewood Waste Water Treatment Plant in the Industrial Pretreatment Division. Thank you, council members, for pulling us--
Thank you for being here tonight.
The reason, well, it was actually presented in a study session in March, first reading on April 3rd. At that time, we presented all the material to the EPA so that they could perform their 30-day public notice. They actually did not publish that until May 5th. So that's where that big lag time was. And we've got final approval from the EPA on June 12th.
So was it necessary for the approval to take place before the second reading? Or not necessarily?
It was under our understanding that council wanted the 30-day period to go through to see if there was any substantial comments from the public. It was the same with the Littleton Council, too.
Okay. Thank you. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Further questions on Council Bill 26? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
All moved.
Thank you. Is there a second to 26?
Second.
Thank you. Further comments on 26? Councilmember Barantine.
I do appreciate you clearing that up because it does look odd if we've got some problem with the process. But if it was done to go ahead and make sure that that piece of it happened, I greatly appreciate the information that matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments on this? Seeing none, please vote on Council Bill 26.
Excuse me, did Linda make that motion?
I did.
I believe so, yes. Councilmember Russell.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
Okay, I'd like to move us on to 9B3. This is Council Bill 41. This is the Inglewood Senior Living Center, 3555 South Clarkson Street, the vacation of easement and dedication of an easement. The utility staff recommends council approve an ordinance for the vacation of easement and dedication of sanitary sewer easement requested by KRF 965 LLC for the construction of the Inglewood Senior Living Center. Our staff sources Utilities Director, Tom Brennan. Good evening, Director Brennan. Again, with this being a council consent item, I'd like to move us on to questions for city staff. Councilmember Barantine.
Do you remember why the original easement was 20 feet, not 15, which is apparently common?
The original easement was a piece left over after they subdivided and not knowing the use of it, they just left it at the time.
Okay. That's the only question I have for him.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'd entertain a motion on Council Bill 41.
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Further comments on Council Bill 41? Councilmember Barantine.
I had asked for some additional information on this project, and I believe I've spoken with the city attorney. She provided an answer on that. I'd like her to just give a quick synopsis of the answer that she gave, which was concerning both the easement, because it's the same developer that's doing both of these, and my request that it not go into a property that was tax exempt. But she did answer the question. I'd like her just to give a quick synopsis of that so that we can all catch up.
City Attorney, please. I don't think it's on.
As all the city council members know, I never give a short answer. So I'm picking out the conclusion to my memo on this, so you don't have to hear me restate the facts. But basically, the question is just the standard analysis associated with the council's executive power. And when you make a decision to specifically impact one property differently than other properties, the decision should bear a rational basis to a legitimate governmental objective such as health, safety, or welfare. If a property owner suffers harm as a result of a city's arbitrary and capricious use of that executive power, they could challenge the city's action in district court. If a property owner suffers harm from the inability to use the five foot of his property, which is not needed for easement purposes by the city, there may be some argument of taking of a vested development right. There typically is not a tort issue under the governmental immunities claim. And, well, there were some other things that are not really relevant to what you're asking. But I think that that's in a nutshell what it is you wanted.
I appreciate that. I still have a concern with the way that this, the piece being that they're required, that we're doing this to reconfigure the property for the most advantageous use for the developer. I'm not sure why we, I mean, it just seems somewhat arbitrary to just take it, if most of the easements are 15 feet, that this should have ever been 20. And just want to make sure that we have some consistency in what we're doing. And I greatly appreciate that the city attorney answered the other question on that particular issue. But I have had a chance to talk to City Manager Keck and understand that in no way this property was going to go for a tax-exempt property because we're swimming in them. And I appreciate your following up on that as well. I still will be voting no on it for those reasons.
Thank you. Any further comments on Council Bill 41? I will be supporting Council Bill Number 41. You know, it is nice to see some variety, I suppose, in the housing stock that is particularly dedicated towards our senior population. I know these are market rate. We've had some recent affordable housing projects that were also age and income restricted. So again, it is nice to see a nice, healthy mix. And I think this is going to be a great location for this. I am going to be supporting this. You know, we did delay this a couple of weeks already. Councilmember Russell.
I actually have some questions why that easement had to be moved now. Why wasn't it decided? If they weren't going to use all the property and sell that property anyway, that all should have been established at the time. And so I will be voting no on this also.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Russell.
I'm very excited that this moved forward and I thank you for all the hard work you've done and the unusual pieces of it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, please vote on Council Bill 41.
All votes have been cast. The record show four ayes and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Barantine.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving us on to 9C1. This is a contract with Post GMR Coordinator. Staff recommend city council approve by motion one contract between Post GMR and the City of Inglewood. Our staff sources Deputy Police Chief Sam Watson. Good evening, Chief Watson.
Good evening.
Again, since this is consent agenda item, I will push us for council questions for staff at this time. Do any members have any questions? Councilmember Russell.
I just had a couple of questions when I read this. Who will be the training region coordinator? I mean, when I read it, apparently it cannot be a city employee. And so I just wanted to know who, how many hours this is going to take. And is it somebody that the City of Inglewood is going to hire to fill this position? Or could you just tell us a little more about it?
Yeah, our relationship on this is through Post. And as the fiscal agent for Post, we're, the way this is structured, and you approved it under second reading for us to be the fiscal agent tonight. So the Post Board governs the activities of the employee. But because we're the fiscal agent, we're responsible for their funds and their payments. So the money will come from Inglewood, although it's reimbursed through, from the Post Board. So there's a negative impact on the City of Inglewood. They define the duties and responsibilities of the training coordinator. And there's actually two contracts, the assistant coordinator as well.
Right, so it says they will be paid $3,000 a month. Now, is it a city employee that's going to be paid--
No, no. It's actually a former city employee, but it's not a current city employee. It's not an employee that's going to receive benefits through the City of Inglewood or be considered in the, as a full-time equivalent employee or even a part-time employee in this case.
So are they, is this employee hired by the Post rather than by the city? Or--
The Post Board makes the decision on who that employee is going to be, not the City of Inglewood. We're, as the fiscal agent, we just administer the funds that would reimburse them.
And that person will actually--
Under this contract, I'm sorry.
Okay. And that person will actually work with the City of Inglewood, though?
They're monitored by the Post Board. They don't, they don't, the only activities they'll have with the City of Inglewood is when we have an interest with the Post Board. If we're applying for a scholarship or reimbursement through the Post Board, we may have to have a conversation with the coordinator or the assistant coordinator.
Okay, so the only reason it came through Inglewood is because we're administering--
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further comments on this? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record show six ayes.
Don't go too far because we've got 9C2, also a contract with Post GMR Assistant Coordinator. This is contracts with the City of Inglewood as the fiscal agent for Post GMR. Staff recommends a council approve by motion the one contract between Post GMR and the City of Inglewood. Again, our staff sources Deputy Police Chief Sam Watson. Any questions for Chief Watson? Councilmember Russell.
I really have no questions. They all got answered with the first one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure. Seeing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve 9C2.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Move us on to 9C3. This is the Big Dry Creek Diversion and Intake Professional Final Design Services Phase Two. The Inglewood Water and Sewer Board at their June 6, 2017 meeting recommend council approval by motion the professional final design services proposal for the Big Dry Creek Diversion replacement, diversion and intake phase two McLoughlin, I'm sorry, McLaughlin Whitewater Design Group in the amount of $97,000. Our staff sources are Utilities Director Tom Brennan. Again, since this is consented agenda, I'll ask for council questions. Councilmember Russell.
What is the total cost of this whole diversion project? Is it like 1.6 million or something?
The current estimate for construction is 1.2.
Okay, so, and this is part of that figure, this 97,000?
No, the design is above and beyond that, and that is roughly about 190,000 with permitting.
Okay, and so this is really for the design of moving the intake?
This is for the design of the actual structure that will divert the flows. This structure will be located in Big Dry Creek. Last meeting, you approved the pipeline, which will carry the water, and that is under the River Run Project that is currently getting built, so we had to expedite that and broke it up.
Okay, and this will actually help reduce the sludge pile?
It'll lower our radio, the naturally occurring radioactivity we take in at the plant. The primary objective would be hardness.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Barantine.
The questions end up coming up because, I mean, with a 1.6, a $1.2 million, and then another 190,000 that, I'm glad to see this coming forward. If, I mean, the Inglewood Herald has it that the Big Dry Creek project that will help mitigate the sludge issue seems to be more of the reasoning for it than kind of what we got in the packet, so is there an equal amount to mitigating the sludge issue and the radioactive material and that? Because I didn't see that as much in this as I did in the presentation for the budget, that there was much more emphasis on that this was going to mitigate that problem, so...
It's going to mitigate two problems, the hardness and the naturally occurring radioactivity. They're both source, the source of both of those is primarily Big Dry Creek.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
The primary reason why we went into this, though, was for the hardness of the water. That's what the settlement with Denver was all about. It took years and years and years, and this is the final piece of it, and now we have some funding to move forward, not all of it, but 500,000, right?
600,000.
600,000, yeah.
This started in March of 2015.
Right, so, yeah, this is the first stage of it, and I'm excited to see it happen, finally.
Thank you. Go back to Councilmember Barantine.
Well, if that's the case, then when that we have articles like this, then that's very disturbing, because if we're doing this to protect our citizens and their health and to mitigate something that's a very serious issue, I'm all for spending that kind of money, and if the Inglewood Herald has it wrong, and it's not the emphasis on that, then I want to make sure that we're getting out a much better message to the press instead of having stories like this, unless it's, I mean, if we're benefiting significantly by changing it and reducing it, then I guess the article is accurate, so either we do our process, but if it's just the hardness, then that doesn't seem to add credence to this, and some of the comments that were made by staff that got brought to me after that last budget meeting, was that at Charles Hay? I can't remember the school that we were at, but I'm not sure if I'm getting the emphasis on there, because I have a lot of people who are congratulating us, saying, "Thank you for taking care of this problem and mitigating this," which is a little bit more what the story is saying, and then coming forward, I'm getting stuff that says, "No, it's to take care of water hardness."
It addresses both issues.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve 9C3.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Do we have any further comments on this issue? I will say that I'm happy to support this. I do think this has been a long time coming, and I do believe that the primary purpose of this is to resolve our hardness issue. You know, that provides buildup in some home appliances around town and causes some taste issues with our local water, and I do believe it does provide that secondary benefit of mitigating, you know, less naturally occurring radioactive residual as we're going through the process of purifying that water. And so, you know, again, what this is going to do is divert Big Dry Creek a little bit downstream from where we're actually intaking our water source, and again, as Councilmember Olson pointed out, this is partially being funded by our settlement with Denver Water for 600,000, to the tune of 600,000. So again, I'm happy to see this come fruition. I know a lot of residents, this is a long time coming in their perspective. Councilmember Barantine.
I appreciate that we're taking care of the sludge issue along with us. It's important to the citizens. This issue's been going on for a year and a half, and it's important that if it's addressing it, that we own that and celebrate the fact that we care about their citizen's safety and that we're doing something about it if there's concern.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 10, Public Hearing Item. Seeing none tonight, I'll move us on to Agenda Item 11. This is Ordinance Resolutions and Motions. Under 11A, Approval of Ordinances on First Reading, we have an 11A1. This is Council Bill 50. This is Amendments to the International Fire Code. Staff recommends that city council adopt a bill for ordinance amending Title A, Chapter Two, Article E of the Inglewood Municipal Code 2000 pertaining to the International Fire Code. Staff further recommends that city council make a motion to set a public hearing on Council Bill 50 to be held at the regular city council meeting on August 7, 2017, with publication of the legal notice to appear in the City of Inglewood website on July 19, 2017, and in the Inglewood Herald on July 27, 2017. Our staff sources are Fire Marshal Laura Herblin. Good evening. Do we have any council questions for staff? Well, actually, let's see if there's a staff presentation.
Good evening. With the repeated study sessions on this topic, I don't have a presentation this evening.
Thank you. Do we have council questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion on Council Bill 50.
No moved.
So move.
A second? We have to set the...
Yeah, could you clarify that you're not only moving Council Bill 50, but also to set the public hearing on August 7, 2017?
As per 11A.
You're good with, you are also moving the public hearing on August 7, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And the second, who is the second?
I already said second.
Thank you, and you're good with that. So we've got a first and a second on Council Bill 50. Do we have any comments on 50? Seeing none, I am going to be supporting Council Bill 50. I do appreciate city staff working in conjunction with Denver to find out, you know, how much of the amendments they wanted to do for safety of the firefighters, especially in other first responders, while trying to balance what's in the best interest of Inglewood. And I know that this is sort of our first rodeo and attempt to do that, and appreciate all those efforts, and I think we're going to end up in a good spot here. Any further comments on this? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Let's move on to 11C.
See August 7.
Moving on to 11C1. VMware Software Licensing. The Information Technology Department recommends council approve by motion the purchase of VMware EXI version 6.5 for $37,726.90 from Peak Resources, Inc. This purchase will upgrade the city's virtual computing platform to the latest supported version. The city will benefit from this upgrade with added stability, security, and versatility that the enhancements included in this software upgrade provide. Our staff sources Network Engineer Dan Seacrest, Seacrest, I always miss it. Seacrest, thank you. Welcome.
Indeed, I don't have a presentation beyond that that pretty much sums it up, so...
Thank you. Questions from city council? Councilmember Barantine?
I think Russell was first.
Councilmember Russell, thank you.
I just, I have a question, and perhaps the city clerk's office can answer this. Why was this item moved to a resolution instead of approval on second reading? In the draft, it was passed on first reading on 7/3/17.
So actually, Councilmember Russell, I went back and pulled the packet, so it never did go at the July 3 meeting. It was a mistake made on the minutes. This item was accidentally exported onto the minutes, so we just need to, we need to amend the minutes that were just approved, because that's the, that's where the correction needs to be made, but this, this has not come to council for anything previously, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further, Councilmember Russell?
No.
Councilmember Barantine.
Do you want me to make a motion to amend the minutes? Make a motion to amend the minutes? Could you give us the information on how you want this amended?
To amend, to amend the minutes is to remove...
If you don't mind, maybe we'll come back to this issue right after we resolve this issue. We're right now on, in the middle, in my mind, of VMware Software Licensing discussion here. So any further questions for staff on this issue? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve 11C1.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Barantine.
Stephanie, could we please just clarify that this is the, it's just coming through as a resolution? I mean, this is the first reading for it?
This is the only time it's come to council. It was not on the agenda. It just shows...
And it will be the only time it comes to council.
Correct.
Yes, correct. It's a, it's a motion, by motion.
If you will, if you will, gratiate me, please, and just make sure that we don't forget and not have that corrected before we leave tonight. I'd appreciate it.
And actually, it's already been corrected, and I will get you a hard copy of that.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion on this item, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
I'll suggest we loop back around to this issue here, but my thought is let's take care of some of these staff issues. Let's move on to 11C2. This is Resolution for 2017 Budget Supplemental Appropriation for Citywide Document Management Solution. Staff recommend city council approve the attached resolution for a supplemental appropriation of a citywide document management solution. Our staff sources Applications Manager Joe Eisenbart. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight to, I am Joe Eisenbart. I'm the Application Services Manager for the IT Department here.
Welcome.
Before you have, you do have a resolution for 2017 Budget Supplemental Appropriation for a Citywide Document Management Solution. I'll present a brief overview of that project. I have Kathy Wrinkle, our Finance and Administrative Services Director, to answer any questions that you have regarding the appropriations. Our city needs a document management system to manage how documents are stored, maintained, and released throughout the course of the document. The proposed system would manage the entire document lifecycle, including creation or ingestion, release, and redaction, approval where applicable, and retention or purging of those documents. We considered a number of document management systems when we were making this decision, a couple of which we currently own, the city currently owns. TRIM is one of those. We found that TRIM did not meet many of the requirements that were necessary for the document handling in the city. Some of those pertinent requirements were OCR, Optical Character Recognition, retention schedules, and, excuse me, and purging of documents. We also considered the iCompass, which is our Meetings and Agenda application for document storage. It does meet many of those requirements, however, it does fall short in a few areas, specifically with regards to OCR, Optical Character Recognition. More importantly, iCompass is not really set up as a document storage solution for the entire organization. It is a very costly proposition. We currently have in storage 16 terabytes of data. The iCompass solution only offers another 100 gigabytes or so of data at the current contract. Gets very pricey after that, so we believe that's not a good solution for us. We also looked at the Tyler Content Management Solution. This is an enterprise solution offered by Tyler. They are also our vendor for the new ERP system. They do satisfy all of the major requirements for document management, and they do so very well. Additionally, they provide a number of staff resource-saving measures by automatically ingesting documents. Documents created within New World are automatically classified and attached to the records that they're, they're intended to be attached to. They also provide optical character recognition, the ability to populate forms through that optical character recognition, which saves us time in researching and makes that document much more alive to us and much more useful to us. It also provides retention and purging capabilities so that we can get rid of documents on the back end when they're no longer relevant or no longer needed, and it offers complex redaction capability, so when we release a document that is, that needs to be redacted before it can be released to the public, it provides enhanced capabilities so that much less time is needed to redact that document, and when you're talking about pages and pages, sometimes that can be a significant staff resource issue. The last benefit to that is, it is, of course, the same vendor as our ERP system, and therefore seamlessly integrates with the ERP, and it, it gives us the ability to go to one source for that, for the support and service on those items, so I think that's a great benefit to us. Make sure I got everything on my notes here. Seamless integration is definitely going to be more... What's the word I'm looking for? I'm sorry. It's going to be more dependable for us. Integration into other, other document management systems are going to be more clunky, they're going to be a point of failure for us. I don't think that's something that we can afford in our, in our current staffing to have downtime waiting for those types of break fixes. So staff recommends approval by motion, the resolution to the 2017 Budget Supplemental Appropriation for a Citywide Document Management Solution in the amount of $80,000. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions from city council? Councilmember Russell?
Is the reason that this came up now in the middle of the year is because we're getting really close to already filling up the memory at iCompass without going over? Or why did it come up right now in the middle of the year?
It really came up because we realized what the, what the capabilities of iCompass was. We, in researching that and understanding that we wanted a product that would handle all of our documents citywide, we went into the iCompass agreement and realized that we only had 100 gigabytes of additional data storage. The data storage with Meetings and Agendas is unlimited, but when you go to other documents outside of Meetings and Agendas, it, it's subject to that limitation. An additional 500 gigabytes of data with iCompass is $9,500 a year, so...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Yates? Will this handle revisions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
Did you mean it would be 95,000 a year or 9,500?
9,500 a year. Did I say 95,000?
No, so, okay.
So per 500 gigabytes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on current storage, we have...
This is for 80,000, 9,500 is less.
Right, but...
I mean, I was just trying to wrap my head around that, but I appreciate what you, the clarification on there. clarification on there. Who, who will be, are you working with our legal department for the process, the, our policies and procedures for retention, what we would redact in our document classification? Or are they doing that? Or how are they, how are they getting that information to make that decision?
The city currently employs the Colorado Municipal League's retention policy.
Uh huh.
So, that would govern, govern the retention portion of that. I can't answer the question as far as what is redacted and what is not. I don't have the specific knowledge about our policies there.
Want to try to ask again?
Who does that? And, and if it's not followed, who would be liable for it? Is it them or us?
It honestly depends on how it gets put in. If, if they, if there was a mistake on their part, it might be them, but our maintenance of records is so strict under the Colorado Open Records Act that we just, honestly, we just have to monitor and make sure there aren't mistakes.
Okay. So, as far as the document classification, redaction, and the retention of, of documents, we follow state law, not, I mean, Colorado Municipal League might help us, but we follow state law.
No, and, and that's, we don't follow Colorado Municipal League. We follow the, the Colorado, say it louder. That in place for several years now.
Using the mic, Lou. I don't know if we cut that.
And then that's in compliance with the state law then, as well.
Yeah, it's, it's set forth by, I'm sorry, I've been working on that all day today, and I'm just drawing a blank on, on the words.
Okay.
But as set forth with, by the state, what is the name of the organization that we've been following? They just did their 26th.
Well, it's, it's through the, it's the state of Colorado. It's the Colorado Municipal Records Retention Schedule.
State Archivist is, is what I'm.
Oh, the State Archivist.
And they, they update that annually, and we stay in compliance with their annual updates.
Okay. So, we set some clear guidelines for them and how they're going to handle our documents, and then we also maintain some responsibility, making sure that that's followed through. Okay. And then the other one is for Kathleen. And the, and this may just be an error of the date, but when you have, it's July 17th, and we're voting today, but the document says that this will reduce the current unappropriated fund balance in the Public Improvement Fund as of 6/30/2017.
That was the balance as of the end of June. We don't have the balance of the end of July yet. We're still working on those numbers.
But it also says that it's, it's reducing, it's reducing money as if we've spent it in June, is what this reads. And so, I, I can't, while I'd like to change the past sometimes, I can't, I can't change, I can't vote in July for something that would affect June, and that seemed to be how this was reading, so I was confused.
The intent of the sentence was to say the balance of June is this, and then we will be taking 80,000 from that.
So, it would actually be, it would actually reduce the 753,492 and 81 cents by the 80,000.
Right.
Not that the 753,492 is with the 80,000 already reduced, which.
That is true.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further, Councilmember Barantin?
I'll let her ask some questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm excited to see it come forward. I know that document management is a really important thing, and I'm really happy to see that we're going to hopefully get it all into one place, so it's a lot easier. Particularly liked the searchability. I don't know if we have that capability now, but I know that's probably really important going forward. And then just so I'm clear, the redaction, how we currently do it now, we have to print it out, line through it, scan it, no? Okay. An enhanced version. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
My questions go a little bit more to the budget. And so, this 753,492 was the balance in that fund at the end of June.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, and we're going to take 80,000 out of it. Does that mean on the unappropriated fund balance in the budget, under the Public Improvement Fund, the, is 587,314? So, that means we only have less than 200,000 to spend between now and the end of the year? Are we still going to end on that 587,000, or is that going to be lower?
That is where we plan to end each project. I mean, we're halfway through the year, so there could be some adjustments, but we're not anticipating any at this point. We do review that monthly with the directors to make sure that they're on track, that they're not seeing any underruns or overruns. Otherwise, we would have tried to harvest the underruns if there were any.
But even though we're doing a supplemental budget appropriation, it's still going to end at the same point?
That's the reserve that we expect to have at the end of the year. That's kind of what we would use for a contingency if anything would happen.
So, when we say we're spending 80,000, it might come back in here?
What do you mean it might come?
Well.
Here, if I could help maybe, I think she's asking, you know, are you going to update the estimated fund, year-end fund balance?
Yes, we will. But we, you haven't approved it yet, so we didn't.
And will it, okay, will the year-end fund balance be down by 80,000 then also?
I would expect so at the end of the year. Now, those projects, not all of that money may be spent this year because the project funds go and roll from year to year, so some of that may carry forward into next year. But that's what's been allocated and approved for each of those projects is, and that's what's.
Okay, but it doesn't, it, it's been appropriated for all of the projects in the, that we budgeted for, but not for this 80,000?
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantin?
If the 80,000 is already coming out of there, then you only have, say, 160,000 left to spend. Could you tell, I would like to know what's left that you intended to spend that we had already planned on that's going to bring us to that same reserve of the 500,000, 500, whatever.
Sure you're asking me?
Because that seems to be a very low amount for the remainder of the year when we're only, you know, just a little over, barely over halfway through the year for only 160, 170,000 left to be spent in our Public Improvement Fund. So, I think that's important to know. It's just concerning.
Are you asking for an accounting on each of the projects that are in that fund at this point?
What was left to spend that we had budgeted that has not yet been spent, it's only 160,000. That's not very much, that's not very much money, so I'd kind of like to know if we're bumping something else in order to do this is important, or whether we just intend to continue to eat into that 500,000. I'd like to just, it's probably something the city manager will end up having to tell us, but that's, it's just important so we can keep track.
I, I know of nothing at this point that would eat further into that, but we, we weren't aware of this project coming up either. So, if anything does come up, we would certainly bring it to you. There's no reallocation of that money without your approval.
I think your question still comes back to the same issue that Councilmember Russell brought up, which is, I think Kathleen is mentioning that she's going to adjust the year-end estimated balance down 80,000. So, you know, don't get it twisted here. We definitely are spending more money. This is supplemental appropriation, increased spending during the year.
I don't have it twisted. I know we're spending more money, but it also could be a decision that was made maybe to not spend on something else. I just want to know where that, where we're at in that decision process in handling the budget for something that we did not anticipate.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell, further questions?
Actually, I just, I just wanted to say that at the end of 2016, the actual, I guess it's estimated actual fund, unappropriated fund balance was 1.7 million, and we're, at the end of June, are down to 750,000. So, we've spent a substantial amount already of that 1.7 million, so.
Yes, that portion was appropriated.
As a, as a point of clarification, again, I think we're, I want to make sure that we're talking apples to apples. So, this is the Public Improvement Fund, fund balance, not the general fund, fund balance, so.
Public Improvement Fund.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's what we're talking about.
Uh huh.
Further questions for staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion on 9C2, or I'm sorry, 11C2?
Move to approve 11C2.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further comments on this issue? I will be supporting this. You know, I know that this has been a long-term organizational need of ours. You know, I'm really glad that technology can really help us be more efficient and diligent in all of our documents and data management. You know, that goes to so many different people within our organization. So, thank you for your efforts in trying to improve what we're doing there. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 11C3. This is the Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant Nitrifying Trickling Filter Pump and Motor Repair and Rebuild Project. The Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant recommends that council approve by motion a purchase order agreement with Brimhall Industrial to repair and rebuild nitrifying trickling filter pump and motor, P5001, in the amount of 70,285. Our staff source is engineering and maintenance manager Chong Wu. Good evening, Mr. Wu.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, city council. This evening, I have a series of three equipment repair projects for your approval, the first being the nitrifying trickling filter pump repair project. So, nitrifying trickling filters are used in our tertiary treatment system to remove ammonia from the wastewater. We have three nitrifying trickling filter tanks. Each is above ground, have 24 vertical feet and 105 diameter feet of crossflow media. We have a set of five pumps, which are used to distribute the secondary effluent over this crossflow media. That's where the treatment occurs. Pump 001 has shown diminished wear and diminished performance, and we're recommending refurbishment. We received two quotes from qualified equipment vendors, and we are recommending Brimhall Industrial in the amount of 70,285. This project was budgeted as part of our 2017 Engineering Maintenance Division budget, and the costs will be shared by each of the cities of Inglewood and Littleton. Thank you. I'll ask, entertain any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Olson?
Always wanted to buy a nitrifying trickling filter pump. No, I get to, so.
Especially the PO5.
Yeah. It's almost a 40,000 difference between those two. What, what accounted for that?
Well, Brimhall is a local. It's, it's located in Montevista, Colorado. The other vendor is, is actually the, the rep for the original equipment manufacturer, and I.
So, you really think it's just the bi-local that worked for us here? That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion on 9C2, 3?
So moved.
Yeah. Second.
Thank you. That is 9C3. I'm sorry, 11C3. We got a motion and a second. Further comments on this issue? Councilmember Barantin?
I greatly appreciate the way that you put together all three of these. Thank you for including the supervisory minutes so that additional information on how this decision is reached is available to us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Further comments on this? Also be supporting, and I'll second that. Thank you, Mr. Wu, for your great presentation. Please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Moving on to 11C4. This is the Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant Dewatering Centrifuge Repair and Rebuild Project. The Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant recommends that council approve by motion a purchase order agreement with cen-
Centrisys?
Centrisys, thank you. Centrifuge Systems to repair and rebuild dewatering centrifuge, CEN06505, in the amount of 52,000. Our staff source once again is engineering and maintenance manager Chong Wu. Again, Mr. Wu.
Thank you. So, centrifuges are used to de-water digested sludge as a final step of our solids handling process. Centrifuges actually rotate at very high speeds, upwards of greater than 1,800 RPMs, and this is what separates the liquids from the solids process stream. The resulting bio solids is actually beneficially reused for fertilizer on our farm sites just outside of Byers, Colorado. So, centrifuge 505 has shown some diminished wear and is in need of refurbishment. We received two quotes, and we're recommending 52,000 be approved to Centrisys Centrifuge Systems. Again, the project was budgeted, and the costs will be shared by each of the cities.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Councilmember Barantin?
I know this has been, come up before, and it hasn't yet been corrected, but we talked to John about this, making sure that the money, as it's coming out of that budgeted item, shows what's already been taken out and where the, where the, what other, similar to the issue that happened before, what's already been spent out of that money and what we still have left in there. But I appreciate that you're still working on that system, so you don't have it available to you, but just keep it in mind.
Okay.
Thank you for the documentation.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion on 11C4?
Move to approve 11C4.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Moving on to 11C5. This is the Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant Return Secondary Sludge Pump and Motor Repair and Rebuild Project. The Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant recommends that council approve by motion a purchase order agreement with Brimhall Industrial to repair and rebuild return secondary sludge pumps and motors, P04452 and P04472, in the amount of 63,950. Our staff source once again is engineering and maintenance manager Chong Wu.
Thank you. So, lastly, the secondary treatment process is used to remove solids from the wastewater. We have eight dedicated return secondary sludge pumps, which pump solids back into the treatment system. This is actually used to provide additional food source for the microorganisms. It also provides mass to allow the coagulation and the settling of the solids. So, the solids are actually settled out in our secondary clarifiers and then transported to our solids processing system where they're actually processed for the dewatering operations. So, pumps 452 and 472 are scheduled for rebuild and refurbishment. We do receive two quotes again, and we're recommending that Brimhall be awarded a PO in the amount of 63,950. Again, the project was budgeted, and the costs will be shared by each of the cities.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion on 11C5?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Barantin?
Again, just a comment because it was made to me on the budget piece, that no matter how much money we spend, we always have 702,000. So, if we could just have that kind of kept up, because I know our city manager was out of the room when I made the comment before, so I just wanted to put it on the record again that we can get that, it'll be a little bit more realistic understanding of where we're at as the year progresses. Thank you.
I understand. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 11C5? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to 11C6. This is appointment of arbitrator. Staff recommends that the city council appoint by motion an arbitrator from the list of three qualified arbitrators contained within this report. The council shall choose one of the three arbitrators at the meeting for approval. Our staff source is our city manager, Eric Keck. Manager Keck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's unfortunate that I have to be in front of you this evening on this particular matter. This, this does not happen that often. Obviously, this is my first collective bargaining agreement here with the city, other than the Inglewood Police Benefits Administration or Association, which was done last year. But this year, when negotiations began, as enunciated in the city's charter, section 137.5, collective bargaining did begin in May, went through the paces. It appeared as if everything was moving well to come to a conclusion that would be amenable to both the EEA, the Inglewood Employees Association, as well as the city. And then at the last moment, as the association held their vote, they voted against the proposal that their leadership had voiced approval of with our negotiating team. Henceforth, they've submitted at the last second an impasse prior to the city charter's requirement of July 1st, that they were going to impasse because they couldn't come to agreement. As required by the city charter, at this point in time, unfortunately, negotiation is through, but it does require that the city council recommend or select an arbitrator that's been recommended by both the EEA and the city in a joint fashion, and that's why you have the three names that are before you this evening for you to select. We are not making a recommendation as to which one of those to select as to honor the language within the charter itself, and the expectation is that this evening, according again to the charter's provisions, the council would select that arbitrator who would hear both the city's position as well as the EEA's. who would hear both the city's position as well as the EEA's final position and then make a determination as to which one of those particular, particular positions they would select and that would be implemented by the city's charter. Be happy to answer any questions, again, this is kind of new territory for, for me and perhaps also for you as a council.
Thank you, questions from council? Councilmember Barantine?
Well, basically, just a statement, last time when this came up before us, we asked for some information about what the impasse was and I know we can't get a lot of that information, but I want to thank you and the Employees Association for working together on this. It seems that we are not that far apart.
That's correct.
But, so, and that's, kudos to both sides on that, including you, and I want to thank you for that, that it has come to this is no reflection of your ability or dealing with this, I think we're so very close and arbitrators usually make sure both sides aren't happy, so.
Right.
One way or the other. I'm sorry that it came to this, but it sounds like it might be just a tweaking of things and I appreciate the work you've done on this, thank you very much. And for providing us that information.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, and now entertain a motion on eleven C six? You know, I, obviously, you would have to come with a name, you know, having reviewed, you know, looking at Mr. DeFalco personally, I don't know if we, someone would feel comfortable making a motion at this time?
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
I didn't see that, weren't, I thought I recognized one of the names. Have any of the three worked with the city before, previously, right?
Yes, actually, the, the one name that the mayor just mentioned has worked for the city before. He was a hearing officer that the city council selected to hear other labor matters. So that name is familiar to you?
Would anybody like to make a motion on eleven C six at this time? Councilmember Olson?
Are you asking for a motion on the name that you just suggested?
You know, or whatever name you would like to move forward, I was just going to throw that out there.
Or do we make a motion first that we're going to do this and then we select the name, or how does this work? I think I'm confused.
Motion should include the name of who you would like to select.
I guess what I'd like to do first is to, to talk about what are the best, I mean, how would we even go about choosing these? And why would you say one over the third?
Fair enough, this sounds like a question for Mr. Keck, would you mind giving us any guidance you can provide?
Yeah, it's, this is a little dicey in that, again, I, I read the charter and so does the, our legal counsel, Ms. Brown, that we as staff shouldn't be making recommendations to council.
Right, and we don't want to put you in that position. I'm not asking for a recommendation from you.
So that, we provided to you the three arbitrators that were jointly selected by the Mountain State's Employers Council, who's our outside counsel, as well as the Inglewood Employee Association's outside counsel. They got together, looked through a short list, I believe, of arbitrators who are qualified to hear this particular matter and those three names have been put forward to you.
Yeah, so I was not, I was asking for us, so not you, thank you.
Fair enough, and that was, I think, very procedural oriented, so I think great answer there.
Mayor, did you make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to go ahead and make the motion and I'm going to make a motion to appoint John DeFalco as the arbitrator in this case. You know, looking over his resume, he has extensive experience in these areas and I think he would be the best fit for this issue. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask for a vote.
All votes have been cast, the record shows six ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to item twelve, this is general discussion, we do have an executive session under Mayor's Choice. This is an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four B. I suppose I'll go ahead and make this motion, so I've got this language in front of me that I think could help us move forward. I'd like to move to go into executive session for the conference, actually, it's basically exactly what I said, for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four B. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Do you include the people that are coming in?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the city would recommend that you invite in the city manager and Mr. Tom Brennan.
Thank you, sounds like the city manager, Mr. Tom Brennan, the city attorney, Allison Brown, and of course, all of the members of council who are present, that's members Martinez, Yates, Olson, Barantine, Russell, and myself. So we do have a motion and a second on the table to begin this executive session for the public benefit. We will be adjourning to another room for the executive session and be coming back to conclude this public meeting. Seeing no further comments on this, please vote.
All votes have been cast, the record shows six ayes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I see. I I would say.
Okay.
Saturday, no, Friday. Yeah, Friday night. Yeah. That's clear. Yeah. Yeah, we see. I I would say.
Okay.
Saturday, no, Friday. Yeah, Friday night. Yeah. So. Oh. That's clear. Yeah. Yeah, we see. I I would say.
Okay.
Saturday, no, Friday. Yeah, Friday night. Yeah. So. 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 Yeah. So.[805.38]
Well, it's true, it's like me myself.
Oh, that was terrible, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's some of the most.
Yeah. Like you would do.
That's weird.
It has been for years.
Yes.
There's the else.
That's.
I'm sorry.
Let's go.
They would check first on the computer. Oh, my.
Well. Were you? So. That's right.
No, I understand that. So. Are you? Oh, my somebody.
Oh, no, no.
I'm looking at the trash. I can't hear. Like dirty one.
What is it? Oh. When I stand.
Oh. I think it must be happening here. Or here. Something. F. Yeah. I don't know. We checked your house with all the clothes. It's locked. Or it's going to the back door.
Yeah, so. I got a lot. I didn't want to. Well. I haven't. A lot of those. Oh. I was. I was. So. You're. Well. Probably. I don't know. I was. Yeah. Well. So. Yeah. So. Also. But. I was. I was. I was. I was. Yeah. I was. I was. I was. Yeah. Okay. It's fine. Look. Yeah. Right.
That's why. You're on here. Um.
So. So. Who? Who's? This. But. You are.
Okay.
And. As.
On myself.
Yes. I thought.
I remember. Not a lot. It was. It was. Um.
Oh. So.
Oh, God. That's. I don't.
Oh, woman. That's. Woman. She doesn't. Yeah.
Very. Sure. That's. That's. No, that's the only way I do. But. Yep.
Yeah. So. I. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. So. Well. Oh.
He's actually.
My. What's that? Bio break?
Yeah, it goes quick. People don't take sure.
We took choice already, so.
Well, not really. Most everybody thought that that wasn't it.
I know, that is true. We deferred.
And if you repeat everything you said in there, then.
Oh, I'm certainly not going to.
Good.
Oh, let's see here. This time I'd entertain a motion to conclude the executive session.
I move to close the executive session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The time is now nine fourteen P M. And the executive session will be hereby concluded with this vote. The participants in the executive session were all members of council present this evening, including council members Martinez, Yates, Olson, Barantine, Russell and myself, as well as city manager Eric Keck, city attorney Allison McKinney Brown, as well as Tom Brendan. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the session or that any improper action occurred during the session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask you to state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, please vote.
Record shows six ayes.
I'd like to move us on to councilmember's choice. Would anybody like to kick us off there?
Again, I said most of my councilmember's choice in study session. But along with study session, I want to just make a request that if we have a very short agenda item, like in the last study session, we only had one agenda item and it was the ten minutes. If we can maybe fill it up with other agenda items. I see on the next study session, we have like five things listed. So just want to make sure we use our time efficiently.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
So last week I attended the, well, it's not christening, but the ribbon cutting for the building of the new townhomes over at the General Iron. Very exciting for our community. And it's going to bring a lot of new families. And it's going to help transform that area and handle some of the issues that we have over there. So. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson. Olson, sorry.
You always start hearing. So, General Iron Works, I wanted to say that that was really fun to be there and have been involved for so long with that property to see this come to some, again, beginning of the last stage. And I particularly wanted to speak to the part of it that is done, the found, yeah, foundry, which is really accessible housing for people, which I think is so needed in this environment. And what I'm really getting excited about is seeing developers like this and developments like this. That helps to de-stratify what I think is a very economically diverse, challenged kind of city. And we tend to quadrant people off by economy, their own sort of social economic strata. And this particular development has such a mixture that's going to bring in a very different kind of mix of people. And I think that's very exciting, given the kind of nature of the world in the twenty first century. So that was very fun to be a part of. I wanted to also thank our city attorney Allison McKinney Brown for her amazing work in the last, is it five months now? No, not quite. Probably feels like ten, twelve months already. But I just so admire the work that you've been doing and the kind of background information we've gotten for a number of things in the last several months, several weeks, even today. So I just wanted to thank you again and the people that are working for you, your intern. So, yeah. Glad to have the first woman attorney, I believe, in the city of Inglewood. And then I also want to thank the city clerk's office for the kind of background work that you did, especially when we asked about the Coras. And I really loved the judgment call that you made, that it would be, it would put too much of a strain on you to go further on some things. And that's what I hope all of our staff will do to say, you know what, this one goes beyond the call of duty, but here's what we can do. It was excellent. And it was very enlightening for me to see that we had about a hundred and ninety, ninety-five requests in this period that you measured, almost thirty percent of them from one particular person. I think that's very enlightening. I'd love for us to talk as a council, how do we help those who are repeat askers find ways to access information more clearly? And maybe it's a tutorial, I don't know what. But we have such open government stuff now that I would hope that no one feels like they can't do that themselves. And, but I know it's not always easy. So if there's any way that we can be of help to that. But thanks to your office and all the folks that worked on that. The Parks and Rec meeting was last week. And I just wanted to say that we are two youth that are assigned, that just started, that we just had here, one of them, he was here tonight, both came and they were both engaged. And they both gave really helpful perspectives on some things about parks and how youth use them and what they're thinking about the plan. So in that mind, and given what our attorney has given us about we can add youth, I would like to ask that we look to add youth on every single council we have, as our, every single, yeah, council too, maybe. Every single board and commission. So if we can move, if we're all in agreement with that, to find a way to move that forward, maybe we have to have a quick study session on it. But I think, I hope that we can get to the point where our youth are very active in each of ours. I know we could do a youth board itself, but I actually think their interaction with the decision making boards could be really useful to all of us and then maybe do something else. And you went to the session on youth too, so you might have some further ideas. I don't know.
No, that's great. I don't disagree with that. I just have one question. Do you also wish to have that pertain to our quasi judicial boards? That's, that's an important question.
I think we'd have to look at what, what the impact would be, but I doubt that that one would be. I would think the other was, really. Yeah, I hadn't even, that's a good question. I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, no, that's a good clarification. I think that's probably where I would stop. Yeah, and I think that's it then. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine.
For the youth councils, that was originally Mayor Jefferson's council request. I'm looking at that. And we need to take a look at how some of the youth councils are going and whether that would be a better way to do it than trying to put youth on each individual board. I really would like to see whether those cities that they came back on your council request for that information, Mayor Jefferson, exactly how those cities integrate that, whether they have youth members on individual boards or whether they just have that youth council. And maybe the youth council can assign some of their members to attend boards. I don't know how that would look, but I think we might be able to rein that in a little bit if we looked at the youth council. I wanted to go ahead and thank our new city clerk, for real. She's a for real one now. Who's hiding behind the monitor there? Stephanie.
She left.
Oh, I thought she.
I was wondering the same thing.
Passed out.
Oh, so I waited till she left the room to congratulate her on her graduation. And I know that the city manager attended. That was very nice of you to attend her graduation. So we'll have to, have to tell her we congratulated her when she gets back. And the C M L, I wanted to make sure and give my update. I had attended the finance and budgeting meeting. There was a pretty good outcry from the audience from some seasoned elected officials to go ahead and balance a lot of what the speaker was talking about to doing line item budget as well. And they brought up some very specific, very serious issues where that line item budget kind of helped them. So I'm very grateful that we have that available to us online so that we can go ahead and do our due diligence and not have those kind of things happen. The two thousand seventeen legislative update. I also attended the healing divisions and governing body. And also had an opportunity, it was at the same time, to talk to the people who did the marijuana in Colorado. And I'm hoping that there is a huge impact in the black market increase. And I'm hoping to have George Brokler, our district attorney, come to our town hall meeting. Rita and I are going to be doing another joint meeting. And we can get him in in August to kind of talk about some of the issues that have been going on in Arapahoe County. Well, he does a five county area, but it impacts us here. And information was really, really pretty important. And then some mixed use. The local government and cybersecurity threats was amazing presentation. And I had the opportunity with, along with Mayor Jefferson, to attend the attorney's luncheon, talking about land use over the last hundred years. And they're really focused on, a lot on the Highlands Ranch and how that went through and the water rights that went with that land and how that developed. It's come up a couple of times about having a planned development. If you go to the Arapahoe County Clerk and Recorder's Office, you can take some really huge books and look at how Inglewood Heights was planned as a subdivision with the school, with all of its, these were planned communities when we put them in. How we're planning them for the future might be a little bit different because they had open land when they were doing it. But they were planned communities. And how we're dealing with that moving in the future and how we're planning that is, is, is important too. But I really, I really enjoyed, I think she was from Yale or something. She actually brought it down so that all the attorneys in the room could understand it. And even I got a little bit out of it too. So I enjoyed the conference and I was glad I had an opportunity to go. Sometimes you sign up for things and then you find. Sometimes you sign up for things, and then you find out other things are just a little more, and, you know, you hear good stuff about them, so you kind of ditch yours and go to something else. The Iron Works grand opening, great, like everybody else, ditto to what everybody else has said, to have single-family homes, townhomes and condos, that is not the only project. If you look at our community development that's going in, where they're building townhomes and condos. So, we're very fortunate that that is moving into our area, but it was nice to go to that. Groundbreaking. I thought it was a ribbon cutting, but we ribbon cut a hole in the ground. So, it was the pre-sales and stuff that they were doing, so, and it was a nice event. It was really nice talking to them. Gets me into the urban renewal that Rita and I, council member Russell and I, attended on Friday for the urban renewal training. And I know she'll go into that more, but the owner of that property and the developer are very interested in getting rid of that urban renewal plan area there, because that could cause them some problems in the future, and it's only nine years left of that, but I know she'll go into that training more. Denver, the way they handle things, I've listened, I've been to, I think, three presentations by the D O R A, Denver Urban Renewal Authority Executive Director Tracy Higgins, and just really appreciate the way that she handles what's going on with Denver, and the kind of strict parameters that they use to go ahead and protect the public money, and also make a good utilization of urban renewal when it's appropriate, if it's appropriate. I had an opportunity to attend the Inglewood Housing Authority meeting, and there is some concern in the way that the executive sessions are being handled. I did let the city attorney know, there was an executive session in June, and all the executive session said was that they were going to be purchasing some land. They came out of executive session. They made the decision to purchase land without identifying the land or the amount of money that's going on, what's involved with this. And so, in July, on the behalf of constituent, I did notify them that there was potential for a protest on that executive session, where they informed me that they did not record the executive session. They had no attorney present. It was not for legal advice. And so, we're going to try and, I guess, make sure that all of our boards and commissions are on the same page as far as open meetings, going into executive session, record retention, and hopefully we can go ahead and get them in line. It's very important that the public understand what any public board in a public meeting is doing, and providing them, providing the public the information, and making sure that their records are such that they're in compliance. And then we had a really good chamber event, the second Friday coffee, was at Integrative Pediatric Health Care, which is over on Gerard Place, where the old Blockbuster used to be. It's a beautiful building, and it turns out that the people that, the mother and daughter who are doing this business, know all of the doctors and nurses that I dealt with for the last twenty-one years, from the time my son was born. And they had worked at Children's Hospital and special care clinics. My son was on oxygen until he was ten, had a lot of surgeries, a lot of doctors, and we just sat there. It was like old home week, and I really respect the way that they've designed this, and the fact that they're bringing in all of those disciplines in order to make sure that people are getting that help, whether it's occupational therapy, physical therapy, respiratory therapy, making sure that there's a whole, a holistic approach to care, and a just beautiful facility in the way that they've designed this. And I wish them all the best of luck, and I'm really grateful the chamber is doing, doing these coffees. It's been really eye-opening to see the variety of businesses that we have in our community. And then our town hall is this last Thursday. Councilmember Russell and I had Arapahoe County Sheriff Dave Walter come, and we, we had pretty good attendance. He hit on a wide variety of issues, and I think he handled himself very well, answered a lot of questions, stayed afterwards. People really enjoyed the opportunity to see the other levels of service. And he is elected official in Arapahoe County, you know, because a lot of what's going on in Centennial and other areas affect us. But he is the Arapahoe County Sheriff, and he does have jurisdiction in Inglewood as well. So, what his role is here, how he works in Arapahoe County, what the other jobs he does, and what he's seeing. And he was, it was just really interesting. We were very grateful that we had an Inglewood officer attend as well. And he deferred to him on a couple of questions to make sure that we, you know, understand the collaboration that we have between all of the entities. So, that's my week. There we go.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I'm going to forego on a couple of them, because councilmember Berentine covered it very well. The town hall meeting did go very well, and I was very thankful that Reed McGrath came, and just really thankful for the police support here also. And so, thank you for that. I also went to the urban renewal training by Downtown Colorado, Inc., and there were two parts of the, I mean, there was a lot of information that I learned, but the two parts to me that were really informative was Tracy Higgins from Denver Urban Renewal Authority. And she had four points that they base everything on, and key number one was sound city planning in planning your city. Number two, respect your mandate. And the mandate, their mandates are two things. The factors of slum and blight must be present. And number two, blight is prohibiting development in the area. I mean, an area may be blighted, but if it's not prohibiting development, because there are blighted areas where development will come in, then they don't take it. Number three is always limit the public risk, and I thought this was very important. On the, she said that the city should always be the last entity to put dollars in, and the developer needs to be at risk, not the city. They need to invest their dollars first to minimize the risk to the public. And then number four is value your partners. And one thing that I believe she talked about was getting, for House Bill thirty-eight, going ahead and moving forward by getting a county commissioner on the board also, to represent their interests, and also school districts, or any special metro district, so that they're represented on the urban renewal authority. So, I don't know if that's something that we might need to address. The other thing, I did go to, oh, one other thing at the Downtown Colorado, Inc., the other thing that was very interesting is Adams County commissioners came and presented in their interest and how they work with the different communities in their county. But the one thing that they talked about was, oh, that smelting building, that, is it Arco or something like that, where they used to smelt things, and they, they could not clean it up. The county could not clean it up by themselves. So, they went to Denver and partnered with Denver, because that was a pretty huge plan. So, it was, it was a worthwhile training, and just thank you for the opportunity to attend that. The other thing, I did go to coffee with the chamber, and I have met a lot of amazing people who have businesses in Inglewood, and I always enjoy it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to bring us back to mayor's choice. In the interest of time, I'm not going to repeat my mayor's choice comments from study sessions. I comment on a lot of things. You know, just wanted to respond to a couple of the member choice here tonight. You know, I appreciate the comment regarding the study session agenda. I wanted to assure council that, you know, the city manager, as well as the mayor pro tem and I, are meeting on a regular basis, you know, at least weekly, to make sure we're as effective as we can be. I did want to just share with council for your benefit that we did have an item removed that, from tonight's agenda that was scheduled in. I believe that was a small cell issue. My understanding is that staff just wasn't quite, you know, ready for that conversation, given that we had had some conversation with some service providers, and we realized we had a little more time than we thought. And so, in order, in an effort to be as diligent as possible, I believe the city attorney's office was asking for some additional time. We certainly identified that we had an hour to fill, and Mr. Keck beat the bushes as much as possible during his staff meetings to try to figure out some agenda items to bring forward. So, you know, I just want to assure everyone, we are trying to be as effective as possible in that regard. I appreciated the comments regarding the youth commission and ideas about, you know, potentially adding them to all, or potentially having an individual youth commission in and of itself that might branch out. You know, I'll suggest that we should probably have a study session on this topic. You know, probably in September, we're probably into about September now on, you know, some of these issues. You know, I also want to do, assure council that a study session on our only urban renewal area is already penciled in, and on the General Iron site, so we should see that coming forward relatively soon. City managers' report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That item is, by the way, on the agenda for next week, the twenty-fourth. Next week is the twenty-fourth, right?
I'm flies when you're having fun. Yes, sir. Thank you for that. It's coming next week.
We will have that discussion next week. I actually lobbied not to have a study session this week, but, you know, we want to make sure that we nail down.
You should have one.
Thank you.
We would have supported you.
Yes.
Yes. And now that Stephanie's back, we need to embarrass her. No, not embarrass her. We want to congratulate her.
We're talking about you while you were gone.
And you know, it's interesting, I am glad I got to go, because you learn interesting things about your employees. And we heard that she is an accomplished dancer, and who would have known this if we wouldn't have gone to this event? So, sometimes she'll have to show her craft to us.
We have to clear that through A R.
Yes, we'll get that on the agenda ASAP, I'm sure.
That's right. That's all I had.
Thank you. City attorney's report?
No report this evening.
Thank you. We're hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.